I don't think so. If we build the right structure, we can always add a wall.
No, we built that when we built some of the some underneath so that any overspray would go down.
There will be a drain underneath.
Big greasy mess.
Yep, there will be a drain underneath the cabinet so that it's not accessible to everybody but yet we can get out. And the water will.
Put in a nice sized clean water so that if we.
Oh yeah.
Me too.
It's all six inch pipe anyway, so.
Have we talked to the DNR with the possibility of restocking so our fishing goes up or is that not anybody know about?
They uh they restock as they feel needed. But they had they did not have a very good I was over in Wyndham at the DNR office this fall. They did not have a very good muck with their walleye transfers this year. Don't know why, but so. Yep, they check it every spring and. There but there was a definite drop. About three years ago over the last couple of years out out here as far as fishermen use them. That and that really was pressure on the campground. But it's better to be busy than to be empty. We both a little bit.
Done just thirty-six thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor, sign if I may say a aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried unanimous. Come for a break.
Um also in next year's budget, we have a cabin dump truck, budget is four. Called around looking for a used one, I couldn't get one that would. Other than another new one that they had on hand, but it wasn't having a didn't have heavy enough rear end under it. So I went with the state bid with the North Central International and also the state bid with Chris Seal. There is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars budgeted for this and I think the total came in a hundred and forty-four, four oh nine. I did look at stainless steel box for it, but that's an additional ten thousand dollars and Bob Chikas said we wouldn't be happy with a cabin dump truck for the materials we haul. He said for gravel, blacktop and sand, it'd be great, but if we haul any kind of rock or demo or something like that aside, they're so soft that they'll dent. That's the rea- and we had actually we had no problems with the cabin dump trucks because they don't sit with salt in them all the time. The cabin chassis, if we order it soon, it'll be ninety to a hundred day, hundred and twenty days to deliver it. And Chris Seal is saying sixty to ninety days, so. After they get the truck.
Thirty-six months, huh?
Yes, and that's I thought if we purchased now, we'd get a couple of weeks jump up.
Question my mic, is there a second, so, uh, should you further discuss me? Anything you want to add? All in favor, signify by a aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Thirteen P resolution authorizing certification of delinquent accounts. In this resolution, any questions?
Police property owners have had a lot, quite a few reminders about this.
Under the state statute, we do have to inform them before this comes before the council.
Mm-hmm.
So they have the ability to pay it even now or also if it's paid by the first of January, we have these sort of.
Then we start bringing, okay. So, uh, dispense with the ratings?
Nine second dispense with the rating.
All in further discussion? All in favor, signify by a show of hands. Close, resolution passes five zero unanimous. Thirteen half begin resolution, accepting donations from the community.
This is the donations for the hanging bastard program. The street banners, Fourth of July fireworks, block party, community kitchen farm. Prayer department has purchased equipment for the prayer department. Save the princes, there was an Eagles cop project and donation was made to the ambulance.
Someone just left here.
Josh.
Second dispense with the rating.
Done, any further discussion?
No, we've already pilled all these, this is just acknowledging these.
This is acknowledging, yes. Yes, yep, state law requires the city annually by resolution acknowledge and they save the elephants.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by a show of hands. Close, resolution passes five zero unanimous. Thirteen G, uh, transfer funded for budgeted two thousand fourteen.
These are the typical transfers and we have a hundred program, one that's been transferred to the general fund. From the general fund to capital improvement to the equipment fund. Transfers from equipment fund to the general fund for equipment that's been purchased. Water fund to capital equipment and capital improvement and then also some bond payments have been made for that fund, same with winter store, payments also to the swimming pool and theater. EDA transfer to housing, transfer to EDA. The ambulance fund to the general fund and to capital equipment funds. Campground to the general fund. And capital improvement and two funds to the EDA. Maybe in that order, sorry.
You'll be on your way. This is resolution form.
Someone like dispense with the rating.
Paul? Is that second?
Yeah.
Okay, secondly, Mike, dispense with the rating. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by a show of hands. Close, resolution passes five zero unanimous. Purchase agreement Cornelius Lemonley Fire Rescue.
Scream was agreed to back in October, the members of the fire department will be traveling at some point in time within the next few weeks to pick up the bucket ladder truck. And we're meeting halfway with people from West Carolina.
So this is for the balance.
This is a balance.
Done, is there a second? All in further discussion? And this is for, just so everybody knows, or anybody that's watching the ninety-nine truck, ladder truck, excuse me, ladder truck for the fire department which is replacing a nineteen eighty-two. They haven't connected any parts for anymore. So we're going up seventeen years more, but it's still fifteen years old. It's a lot cheaper, the one's over a million dollars and this one was three forty-five. Three, three twenty-five. Okay. Okay, all in favor, signify by a aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried unanimous, thirteen I, post art flash study.
As I mentioned in my letter, when we had the substation control, I mentioned about the art flash study. Made several, several phone calls to engineering firms. Most of them responded by saying, we're not that comfortable with that. They either don't have an electric engineer that can do the art flash study or they don't have an electric engineer, period. One company did tell me they were gonna get it after waiting a month. I never heard back from them with another price quote, so. PGR did provide me one with one, they've done other work for the city before, they did our substation and our generation plan in the past.
You only have one of your question, or you can skip, okay? It's fine, okay.
How often, is this just a one-time thing?
The way I understand the rule is every five years, we we won't have to do the mapping. They may update the mapping and they may update the fuse coordination, but the art flash study is gonna have to be totally redone every five years.
And this is required by who?
Bullshit.
Seems kind of funny that we have a federal requirement and there's only one engineering firm that's gonna do it.
Well.
Are they able to do it, probably others, but not.
They just released it in April and said that we were supposed to have something done by December thirty-first, well, that's obviously not gonna happen at this point. Nor was it ever gonna happen and I'm sure there's several cities that are in the same mood as we are. And I think as as this keeps going and OSHA keeps enforcing it, you'll see more pop-up. You'll see companies specifically doing just art flash studies. Yep.
You would hope that would happen.
I would think so.
And maybe more considered.
Yeah, right. But I guess we're stuck, we have to go with it.
Motion, is that done, or a second?
Second.
Second, do you have a question?
Nope.
Any further discussion?
When are we gonna get this done, or you don't know yet, just accepting the.
The the mapping, he thought they would be able to start sometime in January, they thought that would take maybe three to four days. The fuse coordination would start as soon as they had the mapping done, so they knew where they were going. As far as their lines and that, it's probably a three to four month process before it's all set and done.
Is OSHA okay with us scratching out a little bit, or is your penalty we have to pay?
If they show up, at least we have a purchase order started. They won't, hey, you know, I'm not gonna say they won't lock in the door January second and say, where's the art flash study? You know, if we have a problem, I mean, we could be, yeah, there's a real, there's a real possibility. But hopefully with the purchase agreement started and, you know, the ball is at least moving.
Okay.
They would look kindly upon us.
Especially with the, you know, availability.
It's a new regulation, so.
Yep.
I think if we show we've made a safe effort. And we have.
Right, all in favor, signify by a aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried unanimous, thank you.
Thanks.
Thirteen J, uh, Joe Rippon Social Service contracts.
We've been working with them for the last couple of years to come up with an agreement whereby the city would end up with the current kitchen equipment and we finally received approval from Region Nine. With that, with the understanding that we would adjust the twenty fifteen rent and just the twenty fifteen rent, so we're requesting a twenty fifteen rent be cut in half from only for one year, from eighteen fifty down to nine twenty-five.
And we need that for our meals. Serve them and. Right. Anything you want to add to that?
Someone.
Josh.
Second.
Uh, Paul, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by a aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried unanimous. Thirteen K is by God, a view from Minnesota River Valley Drug Task Force.
Uh, again, this is a great powers agreement that we have with our drug task force. It's somewhat similar to our heat team, uh, other than the fact that this is all narcotic investigation. The Minnesota River Valley Drug Task Force is, uh, Blue Earth, Nicklet, Martin County, Watlin County. They mainly work narcotic investigations, undercover investigations, but they also assist in numerous other things. If we call them to come in, they'll come in and assist with any investigations that we have. They also put a letter, um, at each of your, uh, spots there showing from Mr. Sunday, I had him look over the joint powers agreement. Uh, he's, uh, from his letter, you can see that he's in agreement that it is a binding agreement and that the city can go with it if it's approved by the council. We've been a member of the Minnesota River Valley Drug Task Force since nineteen ninety-one, so, uh, this is a very good, very good thing that we are going for our department, works really well.
What's our cost?
Seventy-five hundred a year. And, uh, we probably contact those officers that if I can make a full call today, that I could, they have five full-time officers here, uh, that could assist with any investigation and probably have more equipment and set up for doing things. Our department probably has contact with them on a weekly basis where they're sharing information, whether helping with them or giving information to help with uh, ongoing investigations that we have.
Someone.
Second.
Paul, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by a aye.
Aye.
Close. You have this for the resolution. Thank you.
Resolutions for parallel parking only and county project. I have two resolutions for you, one here is for parallel parking only. This is on tenth Avenue North, which will be a mill and overway next spring. And the second resolution is approving that mill and overway project. All of the underground work has been done on that street. All of the curb cuts and everything are already in place.
You have two resolutions?
Yes, two res- two resolutions. First one is for the parallel parking. And Mike.
Josh, you got it ready?
Yes.
Right, any further discussion?
Hasn't always been parallel parking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just gets a matter of memory.
Just have to do it, unless we can't change it.
Oh, the dirt's all in good shape on that, all the, any defects as long as they're.
They they repaired quite a few of them last year or not last year before when they did all the work. Right, there were some sections that weren't covered when we did our.
Right.
And these will be. Everything, everything now in a state project has to be EDA. So it's gonna be really important. Not much.
Thirteen M, resolution adoption of the Watlin County All Hazards Mitigation Plan.
Good evening. Um, requirement from FEMA is that the Watlin County Emergency Management has an all hazards mitigation plan. And this is an update that happens every five years, this is the second time we're doing this. We get the cities to show an interest that you're going to participate with the county plan so you don't have to do your own and we contracted with Region Nine, uh, to do our plan, uh, this past year. And, uh, it has a lot of history and information on Watlin County and the cities. And, uh, what we do is we meet with each of the individual cities during the time span that we're doing the planning. We talk about mitigation projects, mitigation projects are items that you can try and do ahead of time before a disaster happens that could cause it to be even more devastating, such as the living fences used to be a big thing. Uh, the last couple of years, the big thing has been safe rooms, uh, for like the, um, especially down south or individuals like apartments that don't have basements or mobile home parks, different things like that. And, uh, everybody gets to kind of talk about what they would like to do. Mitigation monies become available from FEMA at the time of a disaster. Doesn't have to happen within Watlin County, it can happen within any place in the state of Minnesota. A certain percentage of the funding that, uh, they give us back for disasters has to go towards mitigation, uh, grants. Uh, you apply for these grant monies for these different projects. Uh, I believe you have a listing, uh, that were the projects that were listed for the city of St. James. The first, I think it's six or seven items were included in all the different cities. Uh, the others then are, uh, projects that that the city came up with that they would like to see, uh, St. James, uh, possibly go for when the money's available. Does not mean you have to apply for these. These are just options, the options are, you can't apply for something that's not on the list. So that's where we try and make sure that it's pretty thorough on different items that you would be, could be of interest. It's a seventy-five, twenty-five split when you go through those mitigation monies. And, um, what I'm looking for tonight is a resolution that you will adopt the Watlin County All Hazards Mitigation Plan as your plan. Uh, in a year time, we will meet again to kind of look through the plan, see if there's any updates or changes. And in five years, we have to redo the whole plan again.
Will you know when the grants, specific grants are avail- our grants would be available for specific items that we need?
When we get like a federal declaration of monies, that's when mitigation monies become available to the state and I will let people know. You think it's gonna be pretty well publicized, you know, we've got a federal declaration. But if you want to go for them, it's a kind of first come, first served. We can apply for them, it would be through the Department of, uh, uh, HSD, Home and Security Emergency Management through the state of Minnesota. And I think it was like this last, um, flooding in the spring, I think we got a little over four hundred thousand something, I think it's not a whole lot of money, but it's a lot of money at the time and you've got different disasters throughout the year that you can apply for. And, um, yeah, we would let you know so that if you want to go for them, we can go for them.
Like an example, it's Teal Park when we had the uh, tornado warning a couple, three years ago and the folks in the campers didn't know where they would go and it's giving a couple of houses next, you know, adjacent to that basement, you know, neighboring houses out by the campground and stuff, so.
So that might be something, some type of a safe room, yeah, building out there would be a good idea. That's a big push right now, has been for a couple of years.
And that's on here.
Yep.
So you wouldn't let us know when any of those declarations.
Correct.
The other suggestion was, uh, the Mobile Home Court? That there needs to be a safe place, is there not a building out there already at this point?
There is in St. James, they've got a pretty safe room, I don't know how it fits with the requirements. Uh, but they do have a nice big split block building, uh, that those in that park could go to.
I imagine that they changed the specifics open and if that one does not meet their specifics that they want. And that's privately owned, that correct?
Hmm.
So then how are the monies split, are they able to apply for it as a privately owned?
No.
Truly part?
It would have to come through the government, so it would have to be some type of arrangement or something then at the city of St. James. It's it's a government grant, it's not an individual or private business grant.
But they could still apply for it through the city and then the city would be a conduit possibly or a certain percentage of it, they would do, we would do, the seventy-five, twenty-five?
I believe that's true, I would have to check for sure, but I, I've never applied for these monies, so the specifics. I want to make sure before I tell you a definite yes, but that's my impression.
Okay.
Because I know we've been working, trying to get one for Medelia, so.
We, I came up at the council meetings, I don't know if you participate on it, I don't remember, but I know it came to the meeting a couple of times. And when it put, was a new requirement, uh, uh, at the local, local park, it was like.
Yeah, and I think that's probably about ten years old, but I don't recall.
Maybe, I don't understand what you're saying.
I remember coming through us a few years ago. If you can find that out, you know, and that's probably reached us, not given the years in order. Good question, okay, anything else?
Uh, this will be once all the cities, I've got two more cities, uh, approve this, the county has approved it. Uh, it will be available on the emergency management site with the Watlin County website, if anybody wants to look at it. Uh, it's a public document, so it will be available if anybody wants to look at. Two hundred and five pages, pretty lengthy, but if you like history, that's good information.
This is in resolution form?
Dispass with the ratings.
So if you want Julie to read the hundred and five pages, she will.
Two hundred and five.
Hi, Nani, is there a second? Thank you, uh, any further discussion? Anything you want to add?
No, just saying to appreciate your help with writing this and getting it done.
All in favor, signify by a show of hands. Close, resolution passes five zero unanimous, you're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Uh, a couple of things. Is this the Barracuda one you got a picture of here?
Yes.
I notice it's covered with plastic, they do not have the protective.
They do not buy the cover, I asked them that, they said they, they're gonna try it this year without it.
Would it rather be a better use of monies if we would fence it in a winter like that and take the fifteen hundred bucks for the for the cover and put it towards the building? Just a suggestion.
Yep, that's a very good suggestion.
If, because if you're gonna fence it off, that's why I was going along with the cover would be people messing with it, but if you even if you went double high on that fencing all the way around and kept it so they couldn't get in there, maybe we could use the fifteen hundred dollars in the shelters. Just a suggestion.
Take a wall? For this, for the, for the roof?
No, no. No, for the, for the shelters, we're gonna put it, we're gonna build them.
Put the fifteen hundred dollars toward building a shelter then rather than the.
Secondly, I don't know how long they've been there, I might not be very observant. When did we get the Christmas decorations for the light poles, the little snowflakes?
This year.
When?
Just this year.
This year, this year?
Actually about six, seven days before they went out.
Wow.
We had a local welding happen for us.
I think next time we get some, let's get something a little more gaudier. I mean, they're not very noticeable.
They're also a fourth of the price of a gaudy one, too.
Uh, but, I mean, it is, it is a season to be jolly, I mean, it just.
With lights in?
Well, I'm not saying lit, just something a little bit more visible, I mean, you look very gaudy.
I've had several people comment on it.
Is there, can you light those in, can you spring lights on them?
Wow.
But seriously, I, I.
We don't, we haven't came up with a good option for lighting them yet.
I looked at them in the day and I went, oh, we got snowflakes.
Well, at least I'm glad to know that I'm not, uh, missing out on it, they're gooey.
And then I looked down the street, I think they were lit, I thought, so maybe next year they will be lit?
It's possible. We only had, honestly, we had them a week before we put decorations up, so.
Well, I wasn't looking afraid that any kind of lighted decoration is something that might kind of stand out a little more. Because we had, we had to light some light pole before and we were having all kinds of trouble with those. Lightbulb just appearing up to as far as we could reach.
I have probably taken a call, got them not being lit.
Yeah, me too.
I just said. We didn't get them in time, is what happened.
Not criticizing.
I mean, it's better than nothing. Show of the spirit.
Think they'll laugh, do you?
They should.
Okay.
Is that all? They painted or powder coated?
Powder coated. Paul?
No.
Coffee hour yesterday, we toured, we went upstairs and toured the Princess Theater up here with the new fifty seats before our clinic, around fifty new seats came from St. Peter and more length for legs, they're all repainting. All the painting, when we took the tour, out the new ramp, we came back in. So if anybody hasn't seen it, please go up there. Painting's all done, the floors re-surfaced, the new carpet's done up there, but the steps aren't done yet, Linda, and the walls are.
They're gonna be re- re-clot, I guess.
Re-clot, there you go, okay, thank you. Uh, in the morning, the EDA toured Paul's building on First Avenue. Uh, we're looking for an investor willing to fix up the building. Anything you want to add to that, Mike? It's really in poor condition, Paul and Mike are on the EDA. And there are some extra people there besides us, maybe not extra people, but extra animals. Yeah, that weren't alive anymore. Veteran Memorial Wall Replica will be in St. James, August twentieth till the twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, it's gonna be really a neat thing that comes out to commemorate our veterans of Vietnam, all of the wars, we do have one, that's what I think of. Veterans Memorial have the papers installed, the spring two thousand fifteen, I'll bring where the, it's up here across from the football field. Concerns raised about the volume of sound at the council meetings, so, uh, we asked them to contact MediaCom because some of them have older TVs and it's not gonna be real good. I stayed a little further away because they said we were, excuse me, I was mumbling, they couldn't hear, so it was better that I don't get right next to the microphone, so. Speaking of, we'll see how it goes after tonight's meeting. Your minor totes recycling and garbage, you need to have lips closed to get a wind, you obviously live both openly and all on it. Communities, Nani?
Communities? What are we hearing? What's your name?
Mr. A. That's right.
Okay, how about for detours or discuss, residents are concerned about real coffee in North Side, Joe was having Bill Miller look into that for minor maintenance. Again, thanks to the stray cat for free coffee, Linda made chocolate chip cookies, which were excellent as always. Great.
Two things, you talked about the garbage cans having the lids and the recyclers closed. Please remind everyone they belong off of the street, they do not set them out in the street. Also, uh, being the council voted on purchasing the cover, do we have to make a motion to change that, not purchase the cover for that fish branding station? Okay, I'll just look at.
City superintendent's discretion. I was gonna say judgment, but that's.
How about them toilets? Anything else?
No.
Mark?
No.
Adam?
No.
Mark? Linda?
Moving this weekend is the Penguin of Madagascar rated PG, and we will also have a matinee on Saturday, the twentieth, at ten AM.
Thanks for your help, Linda, we did the tour up in there, and I slipped a jump on the upstairs and.
Somebody claiming to be Excel Energy, telling them that they didn't pay their bill over the phone, that their electricity would be disconnected, so we do have people out there attempting to, uh, defraud our residents, so. City, we were, does not call people and demand that they make their payments on the phone.
And Excel Energy doesn't need to do anything on the city, but. Adam, you want to, uh, the council does packet on the, on the rates from Zeration, remember? For two thousand fifteen, if you want to add to that, just that we're gonna get a rate increase, so we, can you pull us about three, four months ago, that was coming, so here's.
That's, that's just the formal letter.
Excel was. Well, you already told us, Paul.
Yep. Excel and Missouri.
And Missouri. I'll pass the panel. Mike's, uh, this is Mike's final meeting with us, uh, we think it's approximately fourteen years, you serve under council. On behalf of the, uh, myself, the other council members, and the community, thanks for your years of service, we appreciate it. We're privileged to work with you, and we wish you well on your hunting and fishing in the future. And whatever else, and whatever else, as you go south in the winter, farther than holding.